Call me to order, seven o'clock. Open nominations from the board for moderator.
Nominate Sally Irwin.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations?
We nominate Kevin Duron.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor of Sally Irwin for moderator? Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Kevin Duron, say aye.
Aye.
I have to go with Sally Irwin.
Oh, of course.
Quiet, please.
I can add a question for you, Paul.
What? Warning of special town meetings, Town of Morris, February 20th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. The electors with the Town of Morris' known persons as eligible to vote in the town meetings in said town are hereby warned and notified to be in Morris County Hall, 3 E Street, Morris, Connecticut, on Wednesday, February 20th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. for the following purposes: One, to accept the annual audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018; Two, to approve $62,000 transfer as recommended by the Board of Finance to meet the final obligations under the pending interlocal agreement among the Town of Morris, the Town of Litchfield, the Litchfield Ambulance Association Inc., doing business as Litchfield Town here, Andrews, and the Bantam Fire Company Inc. And to approve said agreement and to authorize the first elector to execute it on behalf of the Town of Morris; Three, to take such actions as the voters deem best with respect to the adoption of an ordinance entitled Ordinance to Adopt Morris-Tallahassee Park and Policy. A copy of said ordinance is available for inspection at the office of the Morris Town Clerk, 3 E Street, Morris, Connecticut, dated in North Connecticut, this 20th date of January 2019. Signed, Tom Swate for selectmen, Erica Dorsett Matthews, selectmen, Vincent Iowol for selectmen.
Thank you, Erica. Okay, and when you read the eligibility to vote, only the elector of the Town of Morris or a citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more, who currently or severally was liable to the town for taxes assessed against them based on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grant list of the town, or who could have been so liable, should not entitled to an exemption as a blind person or as a veteran or as the widow or parent of a veteran, would be entitled to vote at the meeting. Okay. The first item on the agenda is to accept the annual audit.
So moved.
Okay. For a second?
Second.
Tom, did you want to speak to that, or is it?
Our auditor is here to speak to it.
Okay.
Right over here.
Sure.
You were there for a while.
Do you want a brief summary, or do we want you to just answer questions from the floor?
Why don't you give a brief summary, and then people can answer questions?
Okay. So we had Tom Morris's annual audit done by an independent auditor, and so that was our firm. And so this year, we finished it on June 30, 2018 fiscal year.
I'm sorry, get your back here.
Okay. So we finished it this year from June 30, 2018 fiscal year, so we're going to just look at the numbers before and after up to that date. For the general point, which is what people are mostly interested in, the activities of the town, it was a break even pretty much for this year, with the net dividends being mostly with the loss of state grants, but that came back a little bit from a late refund from the regional. I'll have to give a summary of the financial statements. Have you had any specific actions? Yes?
How are you? My name's Kevin Duron, I'm from Wanta, Tom. It was reported that there was a $168,000 surplus.
Anywhere.
From the town budget.
So there was, from the activities, it was a $14,000 surplus. So, I'm sorry, $16,000 surplus. And so at the beginning of the year, in your fund balance, it's basically looking at the purpose sometimes as a rainy day fund balance, with that amount that you have available to appropriate for future years. So you start at 1.6 million, and so the activities, basically left us at that point. And then the Board of Finance, last year's meeting, also appropriated $250,000 for, to help with 2018, '19 budget. So you're looking at the 1.4 million dollar rainy day fund surplus in the general fund.
Was that 250,000 that was appropriated, was that spent?
No, so that goes into the substitute year's budget, so right now, that's appropriated to 2018 budget. So, the operation next year, and see if that's not for what the surplus would be.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you just say again, in simple terms, what the rainy day fund level was at the beginning of fiscal year, you know, on June 30th, 2017, and then what it was on, just those two numbers?
No, that's fine. So, the unappropriated fund balance, right, started at 1.6 million, and at the end of the year, it was 1.4 million. The money in the general fund pretty much stayed the same, but they, to help supplement taxes, they rolled over 250,000 for the substitute year. Any other questions that can help?
Okay. Thank you. No further questions? I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of accepting the audit, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the audit is accepted. Item number two, to approve $62,000 transfer as recommended by the Board of Finance to meet the financial obligations under the pending interlocal agreement among the towns of Morris, the Town of Litchfield, the Litchfield Ambulance Association, and the Litchfield Volunteer Ambulance, and the Bantam Fire Company, to approve said agreement and to authorize the first elector to execute on behalf of the Town of Morris. Does our motion to that effect? Make the motion. Is there a second? Okay.
The air thing, Kevin?
Well, Mary was here.
Oh, Mary, okay, sorry.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Does anyone from Beach and Rec want to speak to it?
No, it's for LBA.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got to go ahead. Okay.
I'll stick to them. I think you all have a handout in front of you, I'll just kind of go through that, not the agreement, but the synopsis of what happened since May of 2017. That is when the Morris Volunteer Fire Department voted to surrender their PSAR. The Litchfield Volunteer Ambulance agreed to accept this PSAR from OEMS in the state for the Town of Morris on a temporary basis. On January 25th of 2018, the OEMS assigned the permanent PSAR to LBA. Volunteers at Bantam Fire and LBA have been providing EMS service to the Town of Morris since May of 2017. And as we have done for years, Morris continues to pay staffing for an ambulance through Vintec, a staffing company, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seven days a week, 365 days a year. That ambulance is housed at LBA headquarters in the center of Litchfield. Since taking over the PSAR for the Town of Litchfield, the Town of Litchfield, LBA, and Bantam Fire have incurred some costs associated with this service. The agreement before us tonight has helped to ensure that they will not bear the financial burden of providing EMS service to the Town of Morris. The current year's cost for this service in the contract totals $70,334, plus there was a $15,000 retroactive payment for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and next year's costs in this agreement will increase by 3%. If there's any questions? Yes, Kevin?
First of all, is this agreement that we're proposing, is this similar to the agreement that LBA would have with Northfield, because they offer basically the same thing up there?
I'm not familiar with their agreement with Northfield. I'm not familiar with that.
Would it be okay if I ask, John?
Litchfield, Northfield is actually Litchfield. Let me address, if you're going with first responder.
Yep.
Let me just tell, let me just tell everybody.
Sorry, everyone, this is Chief John Podlinsky from the Litchfield Volunteer Ambulance.
It probably answers some of the questions, really quick. First of all, our feeling is, and I'm speaking as we're both Bantam Fire Company and Litchfield Volunteer Ambulance, the PSA for the Town of Morris, and any emergency services for the Town of Morris belongs with the Town of Morris. We are a stopgap. We are doing everything humanly possible to expedite, and training, and getting the service and the PSA back to the Town of Morris. I can't give you a timeframe. I can tell you what that is already done. It began eight to 10 months ago. Currently, we've got an EMT program going right now, where we have six people from Morris. I know that there's other people in the community that I've received phone calls that are interested. We have already established a first responder program through LBA. Let me explain to you what that is. People from the, people from LBA, because nobody, no entity in Morris right now has what they call medical control. There is no entity within the Town of Morris that can provide emergency medical services under the auspices of the Town of Morris or any agency designated with the town itself. So it has to originate from LBA and Bantam. We have people that we've begun to position, that we've trained, that are Morris residents, that have now started to be, to respond prior, at the same time that the ambulance is dispatched into the Town of Morris, to get there as fast as possible. That number will grow, okay? Our intention is to assist the Town of Morris, and it's always been to assist the Town of Morris, okay? Again, I can't tell you how fast the transition will take place. Our intention from LBA, as I told our selectmen yesterday, is we are very proactive. I'm not waiting to the time where there's a set number, and I can't give you a set number, as to when Morris is ready to move forward. That's going to be a decision for the Town of Morris and the emergency public service providers within your town. My plan is to go to OEMS, Office of Emergency Medical Services, in the very near future, to sit down with the administration for the state, to get all the answers needed to be placed, so a plan can be put in place. We understand how to facilitate the process over the course of time, and not let it get to the final date and say, okay, we're ready, and have another six or eight or 10 month delay, and that's an arbitrary number. We want the process known to us and the Town of Morris, so we can facilitate a transfer back to the Town of Morris. We are not interested in keeping the PSA. We will keep the PSA to help the Town of Morris, but it belongs back with your town to serve the people that are residents of this town. And we will still continue to help you out of mutual aid response, but it belongs, make no bones about it, the service belongs with the residents of this town. If you have any questions for me as far as that, I'd be glad to answer any of your questions. We're not here to take a service away from you. We're here to facilitate it back to you.
Thank you.
I kind of had a part two to my question, if it's okay?
Yes, so I should give time for someone else? Okay?
I'd like to get the MFC's preference on what the level of PSA in town, whether it would be as a first responder unit, or if it would be a full DLS ambulance service. Because if we go to a full DLS, then there's a cost of replacing the ambulance, because the ambulance was due for replacement, and by the time we get a full crew for PSA, there's going to be the need for new ambulance. We're paying, part of this agreement would be funding Litchfield to replace one of their ambulances in the future, and kind of hopeful that it could get switched back before that would have to happen. So if Rep. from the MFC could let me know what their preference, what their plan is?
Our plan right now, Kevin, is just, you know, when it comes times, if there's a big enough group of people, we'll decide then.
Okay.
I can't give you a direct yes or no answer right now. Right now, we're in the beginning stages.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you just explain what the 70,000 goes to? I mean, is it for responses, or people get billed for responses as well? I don't, and what the budget was last year with the 15,000, what that brings last year's budget to?
The only thing that I will tell you about that, the only thing I will tell you is that cost is based on operational costs.
So it's a percentage of your operational cost?
Yes, and I will, what I will assure you is, we assumed far greater percentage for the Town of Litchfield, and reflected back to what we asked for for the Town of Morris.
It would be like 15, 20% or something, you throw out a number, you don't know.
All I can tell you is, we bear the brunt of the cost on the operational cost.
And you know what, last year's payment would have been with the 15,000? Is it in that 70,000 range, or is it more than that?
The 15,000 dollars originated prior, prior to my, I became chief last year, March 15th of last year. This transition began in May of 2017, okay? There was a temporary agreement, there was no monetary figures involved, because we anticipated it being a short-term step-in, stopgap type thing. We didn't know how many months or whatever it was, okay? By the time that we advanced to the permanent PSA, which was, I believe, on January 25th of 2018, it was, at that point, 15,000, the town allowed us to use the, one of our ambulances had broken down.
I mean, you're just saying it covered three months, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, I think that answered, to be honest, it did. That's fine, okay. I don't mean to be rude, Bill.
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
That's the total, thank you.
Wanda?
Let's see. I don't know if I should direct a question. But you said you came on board in March of 15th? All right. I understand that Morris gave up the PSA, but according to the state OEMS, there's a plan in place. Is that going to be signed soon, or we still don't know? And then if you look on page two of the contract, it all contains that we have to still do, it's going to be a minute, shall be for two years, and then we can go up to three years. So how do we get the PSA back to Morris, if we have a contract that stays two years, and then three?
Listen, the first part of your question, you said something about a plan in place.
On the state, I spoke with the state representative and president of OEMS, and they said that there was a PSA draft in place, but it hasn't been signed.
That's not true. First of all, there is no president of OEMS at the state level, number one.
Well, region five, excuse me, the president of region five.
So who did you speak to?
His name is Skip.
Skip Gilanti, I know Skip well. I have no idea who he's talking about for a draft, because anything would have to originate from LBA and the Town of Morris.
Actually, the draft came from Ms. Beck.
We want to go there, but I will tell you that there is no draft, and I will challenge Ms. Beck on that contention, okay? There isn't. I'm going to go back to my original statement. We will help this town, we want to transition it back. As far as that agreement, if you read the agreement, and it was something that we all wanted, okay, it says two years, okay, and then possible continuations. We don't know how long this is going to take, but if you read further in, almost to the end of that contract, there is an escape clause on both parties. So when the time comes, if we decided one year and one day, again, hypothetical number, it could be six months, I don't know, into this contract, we can step away from this, either side can step away from this contract at any point in time in this contract, even within that two-year window, if you're ready to go, we can transition it back. It could happen in four months, six months, a year, a year and six months, under that six, under that two-year window. That's the purpose of the escape clause, is to get it back to you as fast as we can. So it's not, it's not a minimum of two years, and it's not looking to make it a maximum of a five-year contract. It was to keep something in place to, to make the transition.
Does that answer your question? It does. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Ron Schaefer, new resident of Morris.
Hi, Ron.
Just as it stands now, I call 911, how's the response?
Our response, our average, I do all the quality assurance, I sort of a couple of paths, but I do all the quality assurance for every ambulance called into the Town of Morris, or in the PSA in the Town of Litchfield. Looking at the response time, I have a little quicker, but we'd say that our average response time into Morris from Litchfield is six to eight minutes, maybe nine minutes if the furthest reaches.
And you said you have local people as well?
We now have, we now have people in place, immediately, as fast as.
And they could get quicker, and then the ambulance?
And the ambulance are right behind them. They may be in there by two, three, four minutes, but that could be, that could be critical, and we should why we could have.
And then the ambulance, getting Morris ambulance in place at the firehouse or whatever, to take over and be quicker than that ambulance. On Sunday, quicker than that.
The ambulance to get back to you, the town's so down here.
I should be directing to the, uh...
Okay, I was off the whole time.
I'm glad to hear that Litchfield would like to get it back to us sooner. I am Joanne Battistoni, I was the EMS coordinator for 10 years here with the ambulance, on the fire department for 16. People have to understand that if Tom and the Board of Finance had given $60,000 to the ambulance association when we needed it, none of this would have happened. He took the ambulance and hid it for months, and I do IDs in the whole northwest corner for all the fire departments. He is the laughing stock of all these departments for what he has done.
Joanne, okay, we've heard you, this is not the first question tonight.
Yes, yes, yes.
No, that's not true.
Okay, is there anyone else that has a question? Yes, Spencer?
Could somebody tell us how much money the town would be saving when we got the PSA, the OEMS back? And isn't it true that it could save us a lot more money, the more volunteers we have, the more response we have, the less we'd have to pay? Has anybody had any guess, just a guess on how much we'd save after we got this all back and running?
You mean versus paying Vintec?
Yeah, versus paying Vintec and what we had before.
Vintec, we currently pay close to around, it's budgeted for about $210,000 a year. That's from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
We could get that so we don't have to pay that again if we get enough volunteers and can cover day and night. The problem is, we never really had enough volunteers in the Town of Morris to cover this, and we kept going down. Now we have a tremendous new group that has over 50 people in the fire department now, and they're moving, so we have a chance when we do this, to not only save the money that we'd saved to have to hire, we would have had to pay people to come in and do our fire recovery. That would have been a tremendous amount. Now we have an opportunity to save $280,000 if we have enough. So if you're in this room, and you can volunteer with the rest of those guys, I say yes.
They know.
Okay. Anyone else? Wanda?
Carrie.
Has anyone looked at the time it takes, well, everyone in this room, the time it takes an ambulance to get to your home versus, if you call Litchfield first, and this is the hypothetical, and I also gave this presentation to OEMS. So the hypothetical would be, I pick up the phone, my husband's mowing the lawn, he calls, I call 911, Litchfield is busy, then they call Bantam, if I'm correct, and then from Bantam, they call Bethlehem, and Bethlehem is only like six minutes away from my house, but when I get, they get there to my house, it's a catastrophe. So how do we handle the calls?
The information is incorrect.
Okay.
911 calls will go to LCD. Primary service responder is BTO first. If hypothetically, both of our ambulances are tied up, we'll play the worst case scenario, both of our ambulances are tied up, okay, and it has to go to a mutual aid company, they can dispatch the one closest to, closest to the call. I have no problem with that. The problem that we have with Bethlehem is, we've had it in the past, I personally have not, I've got a pretty good relationship with the chief, and speaking with him, I know in the past, the ambulance did not want to leave their town and come into, and leave their town unprovided for, and come in. If my ambulances are tied up, and an ambulance is a matter of minutes away from your house, it makes absolutely no sense to me why I should send somebody from, now using example, one of my, one of my mutual aid companies is Harlington. Why would I send an ambulance from Harlington to your house to delay medical care to your family? It makes absolutely no sense to me. I have no problem if Bethlehem comes on a mutual aid into the Town of Morris and helps your family. No, it makes no sense to me. I would have wanted it with my family.
So if I'm pulled to Bethlehem, can I just request Bethlehem to probably get my husband?
They cannot, because of the PSA. I can tell you, our, where do you live?
Benton Road.
Pardon?
On Benton Road.
On Benton Road? As I said before, looking at the run times, our average response time is usually six to eight minutes. When that call, when that call comes in, that crew's out the door. Crew's out the door. And it's going to even happen faster with the first responder program is the place that somebody will be at your house to care for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
What's the coverage after 6:00 p.m.?
From 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., there are volunteers at Litchfield Volunteer Ambulance, and they do half the town, private from 209 East, and the other half going west is Bantam Fire, providing coverage there.
Okay, anyone else?
Just to answer this lady, I was volunteering Morris for 19 years, and I know when the phones dropped and I was home, it would take me six minutes to get from my house to the firehouse to get the ambulance. So six to eight minutes from Litchfield, the ambulance is nothing. It really isn't anything at all. Thank you.
I was just wondering what the alternative was, if this didn't pass tonight?
I believe the alternative is to go to a commercial service?
And what would the cost difference be between the?
About six times as much?
I mean, I think that's a pretty important number for everybody to know.
Well.
Good question. I first want to say that you want to point out that a person like me is irresponsible for calling meetings tonight, when all other towns have called off meetings because of the storm. The other reason, thing I'm calling out, is the Board of Finance is fiscally irresponsible because they have not left open the line, and I don't, because they knew this was coming, and another reason why we should vote this down.
Is there a question in there?
Any questions? Anyone else? Yes.
I just want, first of all, I want to thank Litchfield and Bantam.
I just want to, first of all, I want to thank Litchfield and Bantam for stepping up and coming in. I think the fact that we have to pay a commercial service during the day is not uncommon for towns, because people work during the day. It's very hard to get volunteer coverage, fire or ambulance in many towns. So I think, and we should keep in mind that if we turn this down, like just came up, it would cost a lot more to hire a commercial service. It would be good, though, candidly, if they could explain how they come up with the operational cost out of their budget. I think someone should be able to tell us that, you know, how they come up with $70,000 based. I mean, just to say I don't know doesn't do a lot of good. That's my only negative comment.
Anyone else?
I just would like to know, of the money that is in the contract, what is that, like, I understand it's to help out with the operational cost, but if we don't know how long it's going to take for us to get our PSA back, why are we paying them $60,000, $70,000 if our PSA can come back in six months or a year?
But it's going to happen in six months.
No, I understand, but hypothetically, you said it could. It could happen in 11 minutes. It could happen in 10 months. Why are we paying the $60,000, $70,000 if we don't actually know when it's going to happen? Why are we putting all this money into it when it could change and come back to our town?
Are you going to give us a refund if it happens in that respect? I guess it's a question.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what I'm seeing.
It's in the contract. It is in the contract?
Okay, yes.
Maybe the question is, this is to transfer the money. That's what we're voting on tonight. How the payments are dispersed are not described here. So I don't know if this is a lump sum, or if this is a pay over time. That's not addressed here. That might be the unleashed question.
I don't have an answer to that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if it's not described as lump sum, we're voting on a transfer of funds to be.
But before I feel comfortable voting on that, I would like to understand how this, because it's a big chunk of money, how it's going to be distributed. I think for everybody to be able to vote knowledgeably on this, you kind of need to understand where our money is going to be going and why.
Well, I think it's pretty well explained, in the contract, where it's going, why.
Well, can you?
Excuse me, if I can answer your question. The money, how it's distributed, would be like any other vendor for the town. We receive the invoice, the bill is paid. This one, I think it spells out in the contract, for this current fiscal year, the monies will be transferred after 30 days or within 30 days of signing the contract. It's right in the contract. Take a look. And it's just like you said, in the future budgets, when we receive an invoice, then the invoice will be paid, the budget amount.
So it's going to be one lump sum given to them?
If that's the way the invoice comes in, from LVA and Bantam Fire and town of Litchfield? Yes.
Okay, I think we kind of need to have a better understanding of that before we can vote on it, though, because now it's going to be.